Good evening. If you'd like to speak to the council on any one of the agenda items, please collect one of these. The city secretary, while you hear him. Thank y'all for this. Do I have a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Oh, I make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We are adjourned from executive session. We'll wait until seven before we start the meeting. All right, we will start the regular scheduled meeting for the city of San Antonio City Council at 7:00 PM. The field stand will do the part of allegiance and the...
Let's do it again. United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas law, our allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray together. Father, we just thank you so much for this opportunity to come and be here with this community. Father, we pray that your presence will be here and that we'll all feel it and say it was good to be here tonight and God showing up with us. And Father, I pray for wisdom, the wisdom of Solomon even, that you'll give us all the right ideas, you give us the right approach, you'll give us the right thoughts on everything we do here tonight, that the business of the city will be conducted and that you'll be proud of it and it'll go to your glory. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Item number three, presentation proclamations and announcements. Do you have any coming to item number four, managers report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. So, the street list for the 2026 S.I.P., I should cross out the word tentative on the table, that list has been finalized. We have a, the contractor that did the streets last year has agreed to do it for the same price. We have a provision in our contract that allows us to extend this for one more year. I believe that's on the agenda for tonight?
That is correct.
So, that's our list. On the 18-inch waterline, we installed 350 feet and a couple of fittings along the way. As you can see, we're done with the new parking next door where we have a shared parking arrangement with the church. And the 30 West Park final flat was approved. And then I have a list of many miscellaneous items that were completed around the city. You can peruse that at your leisure. Please sit here and report.
Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight I have October 25 report. On page one is the general fund. Revenues are coming in as expected. They're not quite where they would be if you stood a straight line budget for those, but that's just because property tax always starts off slowly, so unexpected. And sales tax, it is currently under 8.83% over this time last year. And I think I did explain last month that we didn't have some sales tax taken back from us through a comp over college. And in the expenditure side of the general fund, our court is coming in over budget right now, and that's just because they have a big expense paying her in October. So, throughout now, it looks like they're heading in the production of that, but that will even out over the next few months. And then also in the maintenance department, that's showing the $138,190 over budget. And it's not really over budget, that's just because of the parking lot expenses on in that aisle. And so, through October 31st, we have spent $262,964 for the parking lot. And that estimate at the time that it was presented in council was $304,196. On page two, the interfinance fund, our water super and sanitation, they all came in under budget on the revenue side. And that's just due to timing and just the nature of that. And then in the interfinance fund expenditure... The only one that's trending over budget right now is sanitation, and that's because we did some demolition at the beginning about some of the reeves for that, and that mainly contributes to that. And then in the airport fund is showing to start the year off, had it with an overage in revenue, and that's just because we received grant proceeds in that first month. Other than that, I believe that's all that I have to cover tonight. There's not much going on in the C.I.P. report right now, but thank you.
Mr. Mayor, have a question about the manager's report coming in?
Sure.
Mr. Manager, could you just refresh us and the citizens on the status of miracle people, please, sir?
Oh, Jerry was here. Last I knew, that was still being redesigned. Is Jerry here?
So, we received the plans, the redesign plans, back from the engineer, and so we have submitted those plans to Texas Parks and Wildlife. They have to approve the new set of plans, what we've been doing a lot to do on those sets.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll go to consent agenda.
Honorable Mayor and Council, consider for example, city council special week minutes of 8/28/25, city council regular meeting minutes of 11/4/25, planning and zoning board meeting minutes of 10/20/25, downtown revitalization board meeting minutes of 8/26/25, and 380 meetings for 407 corridor and 409 corridor streets.
Mr. Secretary, I've got a question. There are no EDC minutes included this time? Were they just not ready for that hot committee?
I had to go Charlie because of the deadlines and because the politics that he had to do.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item number six, discussion in action on first reading of ordinance number 2895-ZC number 251101 on a request by Hisena and Ishmael Ohein to rezone property at 962 College Street, parcel number R4527, from single-family six to multifamily.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this evening we have a request to rezone the property located near the intersection of Coho and College, just a couple hundred feet west of that intersection on its south side between College and Puckin. Site's nearly an acre in size. At the November 17th, planning zoning commission meeting and hearing was held, there were several residents that showed an opposition to this request. Now, a lot of their concerns were site land related issues like fencing, there's some issues about traffic, and just the nature of the area being particularly single-family. And the apartments that are nearby have a bad reputation. So, I know that the F.A.F. has an intention to build duplexes, but considering that this would be multifamily, it would prevent potentially a part of that. So, planning zoning commission did unanimously recommend to deny the request, so that is decided forward for your consideration. If you did decide to overturn that, that would require supervisory vote of the city council, so six out of seven to pass. We do have Jose San Cruz, who represents the advocate, give it a place.
Hi. Jose, do you want to come up and say anything?
Okay.
Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jose San Cruz, with the Assistant Structure. Requested approval for the rezoning needed to move forward with a proposal for multifamily request, but at this point, I'm not even tired. I've come here to see many times, I'm a local builder, well, I've seen this many years through improving some of the core structures, sort of spaces in our community. I've worked into several commercial and residential projects downtown. The three-story building on New Street, which my apartment's from this above, the brewery, it's one of our projects here that we down in town, also Slade Barbecue, one of the age projects. Projects that are one notch in buildings, so much buildings that we're about to lack for the business opportunity back into our local economy. I have always believed in building for long-term, bringing it to see. While she is growing, she wants to leave here, business continue to expand as professional purchases stay. As the growth possibility falls into us, make sure they grow in a smart and successful way. That starts providing, that starts following the varsity housing, not just single-family lots. Well, we're asking the city, if we are able to get this rezoning change to multifamily, if you use this project, you know, that you can also improve that area, make it look better also in some areas that are kind of taking.
So, we already have a, the apartments that are in that area now, that is probably not a real good place. And so, you're talking about putting in some other multifamily apartments that could even make that even worse. And down the road, I'm looking at down the road, you know, that can really create some problems in that particular area over there. And I'm already seeing certain things in that eastern area with multifamily duplexes being built.
Yes, sir. We'll take a dive into the situation, and unfortunately, we have to the council to make a decision, and we'll respect whatever decision you make.
Well, whatever decision is made, if it's yes, it's gonna happen. Still not resolving the problem.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from Mr. San Cruz? Thank you, Jose. We have another speaker, Jeanne Dixon. Jeanne Dixon, let's state your name and...
Okay, I've got it written down, so... My name is Jeanne Dixon, and I live in 967 College Street. I've lived there 38 years. Like we already have, there's two different places, there are getting 400 families, 800 cars going down the common of the College Street. We're gonna have to have a great lot, and a couple of the common to that end. And these will just be additional cars and everything, you know, people. And I really don't want to have 12 to 20 families living directly across the street from me. Every time I get to my kitchen window, that's what I'm gonna be looking at. And I mean, I'm planning to live in my house till the fact. So, is this gonna force me to have to move? I mean, if they do go bad down the road, you know, it's like, would you just...
It will.
I know it will. And I just don't want it to happen in my lifetime, you know? Anyway, thank you for listening, and please save it in consideration.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we do not approve this plan from... Tori, could you advise us on this?
So, you know, typically you like to make a motion in affirmative for the ordinance. If it lacks support, then it would effectively defeat it.
If we make a motion for it, but it doesn't carry, that defeats...
Correct. If you make a motion to defeat it and don't get enough, you'd have to make a...
You still don't have a decision.
Just go ahead and make the motion for it. I'll second it and we can debate.
Yeah, I make a motion that may approve. Which one would you say? The... The item is number 2895.
And I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. One in favor? Oh, please make a motion to approve it. So, all in favor? Hearing none. Those opposed, please say aye.
Aye.
Item number seven, discussion in action on first reading of ordinance number 2896 to vacate and abandon unimproved right-of-way along the east side of 1300 East Shannon Road.
Mr. Mayor and Council, some of you may have recalled about a year ago, we dealt with a similar, very same right-of-way issue for the Hill addition, which reduced ownership of this. This property has an intersection on Shannon and College Street. There's a 17-plus or minus foot right-of-way that extends through the property. It shows that it's an old county road, we don't have any records of it, it's really not useful for a public right-of-way through the city. So, staff would be in favor of approving the ordinance to vacate and abandon, you have to put the right-of-way along the east side of 1300 East Shannon Road. You have a question, but we got to answer.
I make a motion, we approve 2896.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item number eight, discussion in action on resolution number 1502, board appointment for the Hopkins County Appraisal District Board Directors.
Honorable Mayor and Council, we have been on the Hopkins County Appraisal District Board, as long as they're longer, renewing this term, and expires December 31st, 2025.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Boyd Graves for that position.
More than 70 nominations here.
He nominated, he did have a motion there.
We have a motion? First people? More make a motion?
Item number 2895, Boyd Graves for the Hopkins County Appraisal District Board for Silver Spark.
I second.
We second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine, discussion in action on purchase of a new 3TNP-tier John Deere backhoe from Doggett City Machinery Utilizing Sourcewell Contract Number 58866.
Honorable Mayor and Member of the Council, this is not a misprint, this is for a John Deere backhoe for the collection and distribution utilities department. At the, we utilize a backhoe at every maintenance job, throughout the collection and distribution system. Our budget is $145,000. Utilized the source well contract, the quote came in $130,533 cents. That made a budget impact of a $14,429.67 savings. I would recommend that we go with the source well contract versus the John Deere backhoe.
Can your guys operate the John Deere?
Well, we're gonna learn how to...
It's a case.
Or JCB, let's get started, we can.
Director Jordan, is this a new one or replacement for one?
This will be a new one to replace 2011 model.
Okay.
Which will then be sold in auction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we go ahead and buy that backhoe.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Jane. Item number 10, discussion in action on a one-year contract extension for the C.I.P. 2025 contract awarded to Area Wide Paying on February 4th, 2025.
It's S.I.P.
S.I.P., I'm sorry. Street Improvement Plan.
Mr. Mayor and Council, back in February, we approved a contract for Area Wide Paying to the annual pay program. Manager Maxwell already alluded to the list that we intend to do this year. And our existing contract, it does give us the ability to extend the contract for an extra year upon mutual agreement. The Area Wide Paying has agreed to keep the same unit pricing moving forward, even though some of the costs are going up. They have agreed to work with us for another year, so staff write a number...
Any discussion, comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We approve item number 10, given the extended contract to Area Wide Paying.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item number 11, discussion in action on assignment of airport lease agreement, Harvard Lot 1220-68.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the original lease on this lot was between city and Carl Bryant in 2004, subsequently sold in '22, and again in 2024. Current owner is Richard Erbey, and he's entered into a agreement to sell this area to Shane Mitchell. Assignment would effectively sign the remaining term of the original lease, and is executed on March 3rd, 2029.
Mr. Mayor, we approve airport lease agreement for lot 1220-68.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 12, discussion in action on a motion to approve free agricultural license agreements at Thermal Property, and authorized city manager to sign said agreements.
Honorable Mayor and Council, so past five years, the city council has renewed add leases that were on the properties when we acquired the properties. And we did go out to bid once, and John Massey won the bid on that lease for $62 per acre. We are recommending that we renew all three of those leases at any time. One of them is for 82 acres, one is for 51.8 acres, and the other one is for 621.9 acres. Altogether, the city will receive $46,853.40 for that lease. And we have previously had five leases, and we are not recommending renewal on two of those leases due to their location.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve this free agricultural leases.
Mr. Mayor, I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Item number 13, discussion in action on additional service proposal number one from BRW Architects.
Mr. Mayor and Council, before you just begin, we have a proposal for additional service to provide furniture design and selection for the city hall expansion project. The purpose of this is simply to ensure that a building is completed, that we have a fully functioning building, when it is complete, and rather than the side of the shell, if we're trying to scramble and put together furniture that may or may not fit within the building, we'll have a professional design and a selection service. And in order for the building, so we don't, we're managing compatible equipment with that of making sure that everything's going to fit where it should, and then when we go up to the table, we'll have a better idea what the total cost of the building will be able to handle.
No question? Discussion? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, we approve additional service proposal number one of the R.R. Actures.
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who number? Item 14, hopefully we have any action from executive session. Next will be item number 15, visitor in public forum. As I've stated in the past, I'll just ask that everyone be respectful of each other, even if we have differing opinions, we're all neighbors here, so let's all be respectful and courteous to each other, please. All right. First person to come speak, Cal Ricler. And also, please state your residence, and then you can come up for a breath, please.
Cal Ricler, 1290 County Road, 341 Solita Drive. Mayor and Council, thank you. Tonight I'm here with a straightforward request, answers grounded in the law, not public parade relations. Everything I would reference comes directly from the city's own deeds and notices and minutes, and finally, from the attorney general. Under Texas, the local government code 253.0125, public notice of a land transfer tied to a 383 must be published before approval. Yet this council approved both 38s on April 30th, and the first public notice wasn't until May 7th. Under tax code 311.03 and 311.07, reinvestment zones must exist before incentives connected to those zones are approved. Yet the city approved the 1677-acre agreement on April 30th, created zone 2501 a week later, and didn't create zone 2502 until September. No statute allows for the ordering of new views. So, I have one simple question, what legal authority allowed the council to approve those land transfers before satisfying required notice in zone creation steps? The city's own H.G. letter contradicts public claims. Your filing with Attorney General states that MSB and SDC1 are still seeking financing, pursuing commercial tenants, negotiating leases, and negotiating additional incentives. Yet months earlier, the city council conveyed nearly 400 acres of public land without financing tenants or feeable fees related in hand. Under the Texas Constitution of Public Purpose doctrine, public quality can convey without clear and forcible public benefit. The 392-acre agreement has them, so I must ask, how does the city justify conveying 392 acres for forward ensuring financing, tenants, or beneficial public benefit? Then there's insurance problems. The 383 required private insurance upon execution and paying, but the document the city released... But the document the city released shows insurance issued in November ran off in the Woodlands, not the site, and then it was later canceled. That means the site operated with land that's cancerous and under required actions. What was the land conveyed groundbreaking held without the required insurance? The public records also showed the city attorney share hotel lodging with N S B's BP of city-funded, I mean city-funded reservations, two weeks later performed litigation search life on their chief operating officer, N S B Development. Under Local Government Code Chapter one seventy-one, officials must avoid situations where outside relationships could greatly influence their judgment. Under the Texas Department of Rules and Professional Conduct, a lawyer representing the municipality might avoid providing loyalty. So my question, as the council sought an independent legal review, the city attorney's role in directing anything related to this contract, negotiation, advising N S B?
Or S S D one down the ruins?
Thank you.
If not, I'm.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Chef Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor, council, my name is Chef Barnes, I'm here at one oh two seven I F N sixty-nine, North and Down Texas. Most of my comments are going to be about amnesty and the deal that is made. Leadership and transparency equals integrity. In the circumstances surrounding the N S B Global Data Center has derailed from transparency, causing our current leadership to be found untrustworthy among the public. Not only in this, but will be the others too, and that's what I don't want to speak about. I wonder if anyone knows the full details of anything about this whole deal, or just taking the word of others as the gospel truth. The public is wanting the truth, and the truth, we don't want it just with words, we want to see the documents, we want to see everything that's going on, because that will be the truth. It's the documents and how everything was done. The people of Silver Springs elected you guys to represent them in any and all transactions concerning the city. Mark Maxwell and Jay Smith are appointed positions and not held to the high standards that you are representing the people. But you are responsible for everything that Martin made to you, including anything that is known, or things that are covered up and presented to you. To remember a few people, a few employees. Ultimately, you set a gentleman vote on what happens to the city. When that is presented and you do not speak up, any windows will be presented to try and piece as cheap as possible to be there. We need you to speak up and show us your backbone, that you either did not know about all the errors and purposeful omissions that had been occurring during this deal, or fessed up and eat the throw pie to better your life. After your term is up, the truth will come out and everything will lay at your feet since you made the decisions. Maybe those decisions were forced upon you. I mean, I even had a conversation with May Smith on October ninth with two other Hopkins, Harry and Joe, and he told us, the reason they wanted this deal to go through is because, he told us, you guys want to see this city built out the way you want it, not the way D F W would want it, where they come in and take over this area. That's what he told me. And the same fury he has towards D F W coming in and taking over is the same fury that he would here have with you guys not telling us anything about this and this people. It's the exact same feeling we have, there is no transparency. We don't know if we're being lied to again, or for a few to get rich, or if it's just all misunderstandings, but nothing is coming out with integrity. So I beg you to search yourselves and figure out what it is you want to leave this city once your term is over. You can fix things now, establish a reputation by being transparent, honest, with the people that elected you. Because they are the ones you're responsible to, not Mark Maxwell or Jay Smith. I would love to see you guys hold your hand up high, but walking around the city knowing you did what was right, thank you.
Same for pickers.
Good evening, James, thank you for letting me here and speak. This is a comment that I have.
Can you state your name and address, please?
Uh, yeah, I'm a senior producer, I have a post office box that I go by, I forgot my physical address, the post office box, ten seventy-four Silver Springs, Texas, seven five four eight three. I am here to make a comment about the thermal coal mine. It used to, that land used to be called Fresh Communities because I used to live there. And I have a deed where my father purchased one hundred acres in nineteen sixty-two, and he reserved mineral rights, excuse me. And I have noticed, because I got this deed at a power company here in Silver Springs, where, and I have been wondering for over thirty years, so I have my daddy's mineral rights. Well, in nineteen seventy-eight, and it's on file here in City of Silver Springs, where Lumineth hired attorney on request to change my father's mineral rights to non-participating. Okay, that is flawed, it's forgery, and you have allowed it to be filed here in this county. And I have no choice but to take this to a higher court, because it is illegal for government to allow that. I mean, this is criminal activity here. And I have copies of those deeds, if you ever want them, because it is illegal for government to allow that. Because my father got nothing, because his deed was changed. And I don't know if y'all think that's legal or not, but it's not. And like I said, I've got evidence, and I will have to go over y'all's heads, over the state's heads, because I discovered this ad just a few weeks ago. Since all of this thermal coal mine has been on everybody's mind. I got a sergeant who was investigating, and I had found criminal activity. My father did not deserve to have this mineral rights taken away from him. And it's on record right here in this county. And I want to thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Yes.
Rob O'Gosiers.
Good evening, I'm Rob O'Gosiers, my address is one two six Farland Circle. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, I'll be brief. I do not want to discuss the data center itself, instead simply the actions, or perceived actions of those on the council, city attorneys, city manager, and others involved. I'm not here to point fingers, I do have personal issues with the data center that vary differently from everyone else, and I won't bring those up. Instead, I want to discuss the perception of the city and those of you on council, right, wrong, or indifferent. You're perceived by men to be walking without integrity and a lack of character. The people of this community have witnessed the gross misconduct and unprofessionalism of the person that's here on Silver Springs stage. They have seen things posted and went fact-checked and not added. The people have seen more silence from the city and council than ever before. The people ask questions that you refuse to respond with factual data. At this point, you've lost the trust of many in this community. So I ask you, when you lose trust in someone, how hard is that to rebuild or regain? Is it even possible? Trust is not something easily regained, it requires several things to even hope to regain. One, a sincere apology. Two, an acknowledgement of perceived or actual wrongdoing. Three, turning away from that behavior, and four, full transparency. Honesty and transparency are two very different things. Honesty implies that I've asked a question and you answer truthfully. Transparency is providing the information without me having to ask. I haven't seen any of those things from the city recently, perhaps I've missed them, that's always possible, I could be wrong in that. Most of the people fighting over this seem to be more excited about the lack of trust than anything. They trusted you to act in their best interest, and now they've lied to you with a seed. It will take time and healing for the people of this town to trust you again, but that will only come with transparency. That will only come with you taking action to better that relationship. At some point, someone has to stand up and do what's right to rebuild. So I ask which one of you is willing to be that person? I am a product of everything that this community offers. I'm a child, a widow, a mother, it was fully supported by this town. Several of you supported ball teams financially, you showed that, you watched. I've been on different boards with some of you, you supported me in my hometown, and opened my business. This community is why I chose to move back home, to open a business and to have a family. This community is incredible. It has been very disappointing and disheartening to witness the actions I have the last few months. The actions that I have witnessed are not the actions of the community that raised me. So as a product of this community, as a businesswoman in town, as a person that loves and cares about this city, I beg you to self-evaluate. Are you being fully transparent? Are you walking with integrity? Are you truly acting in the best interest of the citizens of this community? We trust you, and we expect that, thank you.
I'm at six twenty-four Plan Street, here in town. And this is floating around in place of this spot. You know, one thing that I just would like to urge to the community, and I love this community, and it's practiced longer than I, since two thousand and two. Is that we need to speak with somebody, we need to stick to the issues instead of resulting in personal attacks. You need to look at facts and not go to the personal attacks. First of all, I don't want to commend this council, I have the utmost faith in this county council. And I have been a critic of this council when you first started the downtown project. I was upset that we were going to lose the parking lot for the courthouse. But I have proved greatly wrong in that, and I think that downtown project has been one of the greatest things that ever happened to this community. And I congratulate you on that. As far as the data center, I think this could be one of the greatest things that could ever happen to this community. You know, the city runs on tax revenue or fee revenue of some kind. And this data center could end up being one of the greatest sources of revenue for the city than we could ever have. Not only is it valued as far as headlamp tax, which is part of taxes, there's fees and sales tax that could come off of it. And it could absolutely benefit the average taxpayer in this city, and then county, for that matter. And so I would like to urge that you continue with this contract, I think it is a great thing, and I have the utmost faith in this council. And I would like to also urge that, as I understand it, you have a contract with this data center. And if you pause this contract, it perhaps could be a breach of contract. And you could possibly be liable, and the city taxpayers would be liable for breach of contract things, such as attorney fees and damages that would result from the contract. So I would urge you to consider that. And, you know, the beauty of this agreement is that you don't have to spend a lot of money, you have sewers and streets out there, as I understand it. I mean, it's going to be a win-win for everybody. I mean, it's going to be tax revenue, fee revenue, and it's going to be a tremendous thing, it could cut the taxes for everybody. And plus the fact, not only have that job. Thank you, thank you very much.
Melissa Harris.
My name is Melissa Harris, three six three, County of Michigan, two thirty two Silver Springs. What is going on in our city's government? A city-sponsored trip to Vietnam and China? Who invited our city manager to China? What type of investments are you seeking for our city and our county? I believe these are fair questions, considering you're according to the largest AI data center in the U.S. Speaking of data centers, are we headed for an AI bubble? The U.S. has approximately fifty-four hundred of them currently. Germany is second with a news league five twenty-nine. How many do we need? I certainly don't know, so I did some research, and I've had several articles saying similar things. An NPR article from November twenty-fifth of this year brings to light some alarming issues about data centers. An analyst for D A Davidson Investment Firm, who is tracking Big Tech's data center boom, said Silicon Valley is using what's known as special purpose vehicles. You may not be familiar with this term, I know that I wasn't, but the writer continued, the term special purpose vehicle came to the consciousness about twenty-five years ago with a company called Inor. Were city authorities currently trying to beat the possible bubble by rushing this along without due diligence or proper procedure? Let's take a look at one of the deals made by the city and N S B Global. On the deal conveying three hundred and ninety-two acres, N S B paid ten dollars, and the city paid half of the closing costs. There were no restrictions, no revision clause, no indication of the benefits, how would benefit the citizens, or how many, if any, jobs it would create? No deadlines or obligations to the building thing. N S B Global has basically no financial skin in the game, but it apparently flip it for profit. What was the intention here? And where's the proof of the proper procedure? And lastly, it might be helpful to stop advertising for N S B Global and disparaging the acquiring citizens on the city Facebook site. This should be for prospective tourists seeking events of interest here, and they want to attend, and no sense of time and money with local businesses. Thank you.
Rebecca Wiggs? Let's sit down, let's.
My name is Rebecca Lewis, I live in Trenham, County of Michigan, two three two back, we call it that. Thank you, council members, for letting me speak this evening. I'm not a public speaker, and I'm certainly not as proficient as Jamie Mitchell, and for that I apologize. But if you bear with me, we can maybe do this as quickly as possible. As I understand these proceedings, the council members cannot answer questions, only make factual statements. But Mr. Maxwell and Mr. Smith are allowed to answer questions if they choose to do so. Would that remind I have a few questions? On the city's Facebook page posted four days ago, it was pointed out that in October of twenty twenty-four, the city of Silver Springs had never heard of N S B Global, and that N S B Global had never heard of the thermal site. Since this has come out, Ms. Mitchell has emailed the city at least twice, asking to be put on the council agenda to address the N S B Global situation. She was told that everything had been decided on April thirty, and there would be no place on the agenda for discussion. Here's my question, how much due diligence was done from after October twenty twenty-four until April of twenty twenty-five? I personally spent more time than that researching behind the wheel. In Mr. Maxwell's interview with Chats Media on August twenty-one, he stated that they were required to prove up whether or not they could complete a project of this magnitude. How did they do that in five months? It's a multi-billion dollar project. I understand that they're planning on generating their own electricity, but who's paying for the infrastructure to bring water in the amount required to this project? If the allocation of water that they have secured from the city isn't sufficient, what happens when there's no water to cool the surge? What's the environmental consequences to the meltdown? Where are the environmental and ground studies on this land that was a completely reclaimed? All these things should be made available to the citizens. Lastly, Mr. Maxwell, as I understand from the interview, all the hardware for this project will be purchased in Silver Springs for any sales tax income, and if this hardware would have to be replaced every five years? Where exactly will this be purchased from? Walmart, Dollar General, or merchants? I'm going to spend the rest of my time here, I've got about thirty seconds, to what you can see, if any. I'm going to spend the rest of my time here, I've got about 30 seconds to what you can see, and if any of you like to respond, if I miss something, anything that I saw on the Chats Media thing, please tell me now.
Yeah, I think you misunderstood all of them. I'm going to take more than 30 seconds to explain, but I will get back to you with my next question. When you have time to leave the door, I haven't quit that.
I don't have, I mean, I'll put my phone down on there, but I'd be happy to provide you with it.
I would.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Lovey, 3636, 469 South. Here in the wonderful town of Silver Springs. In the last council meeting, I spoke on a more emotional level. However, tonight, I will state the business we, as concerns citizens, want answers to. I have several questions for the record regarding the city manager's Chinese business visa. These questions are based solely on Chinese consulate law, not opinion. I do not expect answers tonight, but these questions must be entered into public record. Which Chinese company or Chinese government bureau issued the invitation or PU letter required for the city manager's Adam class business visa? What does the name of the Chinese entity that submitted the official invitation documents contain? The city stamp, the stated business purpose, the dates of travel, and the itinerary? Who in China served as city manager's official point of contact for this visa? What specific business purpose was represented to the Chinese consulate in order to justify the visa? What business activities were listed to the Chinese government as the reason for the trip? What entity in China assumes responsibility for hosting or supervising the city manager during his stay as required under the Chinese visa regulations? What documentation did the city managers submit to the Chinese consulate to prove that the Chinese entity invited and would host him? Was a PU letter issued? If so, which Chinese government office processed and approved it? If no PU letter exists, then what company invitation was used? And what business relationship was represented to the Chinese authorities? Did the city council authorize or give the sponsorship invitation or itinerary submitted to the Chinese government before the visa was issued? Did the city attorney or giving me materials submitted to foreign government on behalf of the city manager? Was the city notified in writing of the identity of the Chinese sponsor before the trip occurred? Why is the city not made the invitation letter or sponsoring information public, given that a Chinese business visa cannot legally exist without these documents? Will the city release the invitation, PU letter, itinerary, and business purpose submitted to the Chinese consulate? If the city will not release those documents, what legal basis justifies withholding the identity of the foreign sponsor? Are these questions are factual and relevant in Chinese visa law? A Chinese business visa cannot be issued without a sponsoring company or government bureau, a stated business purpose, and official documentation. The public deserves to know who invited our city manager, what purpose was submitted to a foreign government, and why this information has not been disclosed. Nothing about this deal has been for the positive development of our little town. If it was, it would all be out in the open. Not that various deals made can obscure purposely keep it dark, the seriousness. You have found under.
Mary Louise.
Good evening, I'm Mary Louise, and I live at 3031, Marrow, 3236. I was here in my last meeting, I'm back. I want to share with you that I have about 25 years of senior resources as a manager. So I work for Fortune 500 corporations, and I know the insinuations of the corporate world. I don't know anything about municipal procedures for operating in a city. So as honest as I can be about that, I can write a book on dummy's core municipal law, which means I have some questions that are probably real, basic and fundamental, but I think for everyone's benefit, it would be nice to know and understand. Mr. Smith, is there a procedure for, a regular standard procedure for complex ventures when there are identified potential conflicts, if I should say? I just have a question. Sir?
Would you ask?
Is there a standard procedure to follow when a potential conflict of interest is identified within operations of the council?
Yeah, file a conflict of interest statement.
Okay. Mr. Smith, do you feel like there's a potential conflict of interest?
I'm next, Mr. Smith.
Okay. I can't see that. I thought it was over to Mr. Smith. Is there a potential conflict of interest, do you think, in your situation with?
Matt Maxwell is correct.
Sorry?
So you asked if there is a standard procedure for a conflict of interest? The answer is yes, you file a conflict of interest statement.
No, and so my question is, is there a potential conflict of interest in this situation? Sorry?
What situation?
There have been, there have been, you know. There's been a lot of going back and forth publicly on the internet between city attorney and others regarding this whole situation in the city. There's been a lot of accusations on that. It's not very pretty. And I think it's potential, there's a potential for conflict of interest when it comes to your relationships, procedures being followed, and contracts, the contract being signed without proper procedure being followed. So I guess my question is, has, have any of you considered the fact that there may be some conflicts of interest that could potentially put us at risk? And if so, you know, what are we going to do?
Crawford Linnington.
Crawford Linnington, I was at County Road 3640. I've got what I was going to say, and I was thinking, you know, every morning I try to get up and be a little bit like Jesus. I want to push somebody in the front, okay? So I fall short of what I would like to be. And I think that we all do. So I don't blame and I don't hate anybody. And I don't blame or hate anybody for having an opinion. My concern is, in Phil Smith's vision, of the stability of it. My concern is that when we claim to be a good town, a place where we want to raise a family, and then those very same people who claim to be good and transparent are doing the exact same things that make it not good. They spread hate. They take things out of, they use AI to take things out of context to spread rumors. And I don't agree with using the internet to spread hate. I don't think that is the way in which we need to conduct ourselves. It is not, it is not wise for us to treat each other like that. Using artificial intelligence may make you seem intelligent, but it does not give you wisdom. Wisdom is the ability to know when we have each other's facts and when we're a community where we support each other. It is wisdom that we need now. I do not agree with some people in this room right now, but yet I still love them. And that is the way in which we need to conduct ourselves. Artificial intelligence will change the nature of the workforce, and it will change Silver Springs as well, whether we're going to be a public or not. And artificial intelligence, in my mind, we need to get on board with it. It is not necessarily the artificial intelligence that we need. The real jobs is going to be in the power center. Because right now, there's going to be people in Silver Springs that will lose their jobs because of AI. And then they can go to the power center and get a job dating $100,000. So it's not just the power center jobs, it's also going to be the downstream jobs, the lines, the plumbers, the AICAC people. Everything that services that entire industry. And so what wisdom do we need? And what wisdom are we going to say to people in a few years who loses their job that we had an opportunity to have a better life? Thank you very much.
Terry Bolton.
My name is Terry Bolton, I live at 123 Charles Street here in Silver Springs. Thanks people for allowing me to speak. I know there are always two sides every so often. And I've always been one to try to step back and look at the right and look at the left, look at the opinions of both sides, and try to realize that somewhere in the middle is the truth. I've tried to do that with this situation, and the more it comes out, the more items that are brought forth, the more I realize and I believe in my heart that the truth is way far from the middle in this situation. I'd like to say a couple of things about the LLCs. They've been postpaid by someone in the city, part of the city. Also, one of the directors from one of the LLCs was here last month and spoke and said there had been no financial gain and there was looking to be no financial gain from anything to do with LLC. And I don't know if there has or there hasn't, I don't, I don't have any idea about that. But I know perception, and perception's been spoken of, spoken about here by several people tonight on both sides. And I know the perception is that there is some gain. But if there's not any gain to be had, then why do these, does this LLC, if there's no gain to be had, there's no purpose, then just it is all? Or the directors of the LLC step back and step away and let some of these other fine citizens, and I know there are some who would take the place, take the place on those LLCs? And then somebody's going to speak up and say, well, they don't know what's best, or they don't know what needs to happen. And I'm just going to tell you, my perception, my real perception of the vast that the community knew those people right now, and right now, I know many of them. And the confidence level right now is diminished greatly. Why is it, I've heard people say, that people remember the 95, or they don't remember the 95% of good that people do, but they remember the 5% of bad? Why is that? I don't know, that's the, they'll remember the 5% of bad somebody gave them, forget all the good. My question for y'all gentlemen, is what do you want to be remembered for?
Thank you.
My name is Craig Johnson, I live at 1530 College Street. And Mr. Mayor, this council, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Over the decades, this city has done a lot of great things. And they've done these great things through present, past councils, the decisions that you all made. And if I think about some of the things we've done, the formation of the EDC, the golden park, zoning on South Broadway, the library, refurbishment of this beautiful building downtown, and taking the tragedy of the closing and the moment of mine, convincing Lomond to give that property to the city. All great things that have led us to today. And they all pail in comparison to what you all have done. And I congratulate each one of you because you are helping to make this city a better place. You're helping to make this city a place where my children possibly not come back here to live. And you're making all that possible through what you do. And many of us here are threatened by this because we feel like it will change what is a great place to live. And to be able to accomplish the same thing, we would probably, just for phase one, have to bring in a hundred sub-putos. And the value of this investment, the increase in tax revenue, and what it will do will change this community for the better for decades to come. Thank you very much for your service.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:04.